West County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. This evening, we have Pastor Natalie Drummond from the West End United Methodist Church to provide the invocation. Would you please stand and remain standing for the pledge?
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you this evening, asking your blessing on this meeting, Lord, asking that your presence be here. Your Holy Spirit, Lord, that you give wisdom and discernment to each person here, Lord. Those who have have come together to to decide how to best lead our our county and our town and um, the direction that it should go, Lord, we just pray that um, that you would be with them, Lord, that you would just um, you said that you give us spirits of sound minds and not spirits of fear, Lord. We just pray that you would give each person here a sound mind with common sense. And Lord, um, love for those in this community as as they lead, Lord, and as they serve, Lord, we thank you uh, for each person that has come here and for their service to this community, Lord, we thank you for those who've come tonight who um, are are participating in in different ways, Lord, and and Lord, we just pray that uh, ears will be open and hearts will be open and everyone will be heard and whatever they bring to the table. Father, we pray these in the name of Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get started, we do have a request for Mr. Terry to call in this evening, he's feeling under the weather. Didn't want to give Mr. Horni's trip through for Valentine's Day.
He'd be far enough away.
According to our rules of procedure, unless there's an objection, that will be allowed. Mr. Terry, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can. Thank you all.
All right. Moving on to the first item on our agenda, citizens' time, as always, I'll call you up and we have three minutes and the first person we have signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins.
Our Rodney report for this reporting period shows a moderate level of activity. On January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three, my TV signal was messed with. On January twenty-sixth, my printer copy count was messed with. On January twenty-eighth, loud noises made in early morning hours. On January twenty-ninth, my smartphone was turned off into on position. On January thirty-first, at eight forty-five P M, my double garage experienced a computer-generated noise, symmetry noise a fluorescent light bulb would make when it's nearly the end of its useful life. February first, two thousand twenty-three, LED lights were messed with. On February second, both of my smartphones went out completely. At the same time, and not even nine-one-one calls could be made for a while. On February third, five ounces of air was let out of the right rear tire on a Suzuki car. I know Rodney knew that the night was cold, but no other tires were allowed, so choosing cold nights, this activity might not be a good idea, especially since only one tire was affected. On February fifth, two thousand twenty-three, my printer copy count was messed with, LED lights were messed with. On February sixth, my TV signal was interfered with at eight thirty-five P M on TV channel ten point one. On February eighth, my LED lights were messed with. On February eleventh, one of my light switches in my double garage had been turned on. Approximately ten days ago, I experienced some harassment from two security guards at the W C C campus, but nothing came of it. This is a common problem throughout the nation due to more crime, more police, more problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Zach Lester.
Lord, thank you guys for being here and for what you do. I just want to bring you a couple of issues uh, up to the talking points. Uh, so we have had a major disaster up in Ohio uh, recently, I'm sure everybody's heard. It's not being put out in the news very much, but it's like a hundred and twenty thousand gallons of um, vinyl chloride. And they set it on fire, creating this huge environmental disaster. They're uh, linking it up or comparing it to Chernobyl. So a pretty major event where our news channels aren't putting a lot of this this information out there. Uh, and we haven't responded appropriately to this issue as well. It's going to affect most of the eastern part of the United States, we are in that area. And so I think that we should be bringing up uh, testing for our water supplies and just keeping a little bit of awareness. Also, one of the reasons I'm pointing this out is because in August, two thousand twenty-two, a movie was uh, uh, announced, the movie is called White Noise, you guys have to check this trailer out. So it actually takes place in the exact county that this train was derailed. And the situation that happened when the train derailed, according to the movie, was it was hauling a lot of hazardous chemicals. And so in August last year, five months ago, they just announced a movie about um, I can't remember, Palestine, Ohio, and this horrible train wreck, evacuating the whole county because these hazardous materials being leaked. And then five months later, lo and behold, we have a train wreck in um, Pentecost, what was it, Palestine, Ohio, hazardous materials count evacuated. So we have been, I have been pointing out issues over the past couple of years here. And uh, after so many months, we're validated over and over again. Uh, right now, um, Twitter is being held accountable by the House Committee. All of the twenty twenty uh, interference that social media platforms were having with our election. They literally rigged our election twenty twenty, nobody would listen to us, nobody would do anything about it. Here we are two, two years later, and the evidence is coming out. Uh, we've, we've been right on so many different parts from the masking of the children. Uh, the studies are coming out now that the masks don't really work. Uh, the vaccinations that were mandatory, uh, we really have to stop, stop getting uh, bogged down with um, management and really come to the reality of the talk, uh, what we need to talk about. Some of these issues are affecting everybody and the future of our country and the future of of humanity. Those are the real things that I think that our meetings should be geared around. I'm not just going to come and and complain about the problems, though, I also want to offer some suggestions. I think that if the community were inspired to participate in these meetings, that's how we fix everything. Less government, less government, more involvement of the community. That's how we can fix this. So instead of the board making such big decisions, we should be encouraging the people to come up like we do and talk about these issues. I'm not right, I don't know everything, but there's a lot of really good people in our community that do have good answers. And we just got to get them here to talk. Thank you guys for all that you do, I hope you have a good day. Check out White Noise trailer on YouTube, it will blow your mind. It's like literally watching travesty happening now, just produced on uh, four K a couple of months ago, so thank you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. That's all the citizens, we have signed up for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. The next item on our agenda is payment of invoices. Each board member is receiving their board package, a set of invoices. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Smith, is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice any board member wants to pull out? Mr. Barry, I do have one question, we had um, several uh, checks payable to individuals, I assume county citizens, you know what those are?
Typically, the uh, um, the treasurer's office issued refund check, certain things, these are not, these are not the
rebate, that was my follow-up question, I was, okay. Um, is there any more questions on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on their agenda is our minutes of our previous meeting from January the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Are there any corrections uh, to the minutes as presented? Um, that's not really a correction, I had, I didn't get a chance to go back and and watch the meeting on YouTube, but just for clarification's sake, uh, when we were talking about the rescue squad, fire rescue need, um, the minutes reflected that uh, I referred that or or talked about it being a basic need and and um, if you read the Black and White Minutes or talks, I made a comment that uh, recreation and other events are not really a basic need. And I just wanted to clarify that I was in no way saying that really to take funds from those activities typically fire rescue. And like I said, I didn't get a chance to go back and watch, but I just wanted to go on record. I was just merely stating that the importance of of rescue squad, especially in the Asian community. Anyway, all right. Anybody else here and now, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say a sign, yes or free? Next item is old business, Mr. Barry, we've got some appointments to address.
Yes, uh, join us with all the thought, I got, there's a nomination for that question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to um, nominate Mr. Dennis Manuel.
All right, have a nomination for Mr. Dennis Manuel for the J I B A appointment, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni, is there any questions or discussion about that appointment? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved, thank you, Mr. Manuel. Next, we have our Cox Trailer Park road update. Mr. Barry, is it?
I was looking for Mr. Holiday, but I couldn't see him here. The uh, they were supposed to have a court on it yesterday. Uh, Mr. King has not been located, or Mr. Holiday, or Mr. Holiday this morning. Yeah, but they have filed charges, it's my understanding. Sheriff's Office is working on opening the case, get their papers.
Mr. Farthing, do you know, did they just continue the court date out?
I called the court to find out, because it wasn't in the case information system and she indicated
No, there's not been an arraignment.
There's not been arraignment, so they just issued the summons, he's not been arrested or picked, I guess served with a warrant. Once he's served, he'll get a date, then he'll go into court system, is my understanding.
Anybody else have anything, Mr. Barry, Mr. Farthing, on that? All right, do we have anything else under old business, Mr. Barry? Move on to new business, we have a local law enforcement block grant.
Recommend approval of eighteen hundred seventy dollars of the local law enforcement grant program.
Right, entertain a motion to approve the local law enforcement block grant that we've received. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook, is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 I'll stay.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Next item is our Kaufman, is it Penos engagement letter? Is this Mr. Barry?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would request your all's approval of their services. Uh, our bond counsel, Webster Day, has been working with me and Davenport on uh, some of our taxable and non-taxable issuances. Um, and is looking for additional counsel to assist with this. And um, I would request you all authorize me to sign this engagement letter with Kaufman and Penos.
All right, entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Barry to um, execute the engagement letter.
Amen.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Barry?
Um, Mr. Hankins, Hankins, that's one.
Yes, sir, I, this is not on your agenda, um, I, I've been asking for um, invoices uh, for deposits, for equipment that you all have already authorized in in the budget. Uh, we're, we're in the purchase of some timely equipment. But since I don't have invoices, you don't have checks to approve tonight, so I'm asking for pre-authorization for uh, deposit checks, uh, once we receive the invoices for Thermal Tech, Baltimore Air Coil, and Train Incorporated. Three different eh, equipment suppliers for uh, the FX Center.
These are the, these are the, these are the, you all previously approved. Getting these prepayments to the
But because it is timely, if we can do manual checks out of our normal sequence, um, yeah, before the next board meeting, that that would be helpful.
So we just need a motion to authorize
Paying to those three vendors.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Almost.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Anything else under new business? All right, move into board reports, we have the Budget Committee.
Budget Committee met on February eighth, two thousand twenty-three and recommends the following. Increase in the building inspector cash draw amount uh, to one hundred fifty dollars.
All right, come from the committee, doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So approved.
Committing and appropriating eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to the Sheriff's Department of Police Supplies, account three one zero two dash four six one two six zero. This is grant funded for the purchase of the new body care camp.
All right. Again, come from the committee, doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 I'll stay.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
Make the following transfers, thirty-five thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and nine cent. Um, out of account seven hundred dash two six zero six six one seven. Um, board supervisor reserve, reserve of high school, school construction. Uh, to account two two zero dash one zero one, triple zero, school construction fund.
Any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Uh, eighty thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars out of account eight one zero six one dash four eight nine nine two eight, general fund. To account forty-four oh one dash four eighty-nine nine twenty-eight, water operating.
Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Yes, what, what is this exactly?
Um, y'all remember we uh, we had borrowed the six million dollars from Key Financial a couple of weeks back? How do you transfer that to wastewater fund and the water fund, four and a half million and one point five million? Mr. Williams looked at it, our debt service payment that we had coming out of that was still set under the general fund, eight one oh six one. This just moves them into the water fund and the wastewater fund where there was no funding.
Okay.
I was, when it was money that was in our budget, it's just transferring it to these correct accounts.
Okay, thank you.
The same thing to the next one.
All right, do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Twenty-six thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars from account eighty-one six, eighty-one oh sixty-one dash four eighty-nine two twenty-eight, general fund to account four four oh two dash four eight nine nine two eight, wastewater operating.
Any questions or discussion on that? All right, do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next is the Water Committee.
All right, uh, the Water Committee met on February the eighth, twenty twenty-three and makes the following recommendations. First is, in order to maximize grant potential, the committee recommends applying for a larger project including Dunford Road and Route ninety-four line replacement in the needed areas from Lots Gap to Island.
Right, come from Water Committee, doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that? Right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
Chairman, Mr. Horni, if you don't mind, I would request that we skip uh, the next one for right now. We hope to have the agreement finalized before you all feel free with this one uh, for this program, but we did not have that agreed, we had to wait for the agreement. For the board's substitutions.
And we'll just skip the last one, which is right off the delinquent accounts on the attached list.
All right, is there questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So approved. Anything else in the Water?
See, that was it, unless I can make a motion that we don't have a meeting this month, can I go ahead and do that?
I'm thinking it won't. Trying to not have a meeting.
Yes, I was going to say. I think I got the votes for that one.
All right, we're on the board of supervisors' time, Mr. Terry?
Nothing to discuss on, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
The Planning Commission uh, made a recommendation that for us to look at on the final plats, there's a phone number attached with it to the owner of the plat. May I ask for that to be removed, if we consider that? Um, that was our recommendation, if we needed to look at it, see what the ordinance said.
Yeah, our, our code requires that you, you have to put your phone number on your, your plat that is being recorded, and it's just a privacy concern. Um, so um, it's not really an essential thing because you have a phone number on the application when uh, folks ask to to subdivide property or to to change property lines. So the planning commission has asked if that be um, a consideration moving forward, it would be an ordinance change.
So we have to change the order.
Yes, sir.
It's um, Sheldon is currently drafting a revision to that ordinance, but in there. We check if there's any other items that would be addressed at the same time. But it used to be when everyone had a home phone number, it wasn't really much of an issue, but question came up, really thought about it, somebody didn't want to put their cell phone number on a plat, they recorded, I mean, it's in court, I can't understand.
Well, and, and you know, you get these letters in the mail now with these companies wanting to buy your land, pennies on the dollar, which are laughable, but the next thing you know, they're going to be down here getting the phone numbers off the plats, so I don't have a problem with it.
And what I would do is uh, y'all would just go ahead and authorize staff to advertise, and so it's all appears to be all sent them in the
Amen.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Have a second by Mr. Horni, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might interrupt your time for one second, um, since it's your district, um, I would also ask you all to go ahead and authorize staff to advertise an amendment to the staff street um, transportation services. Uh, Mr. Crowley has been working diligently with me and Mr. Farthing and others on revising their district to, they, they previously set it up as a tax rate, I think it was a dollar forty-eight cents for a hundred. And now they realize that they would have been better served establishing a flat rate for everybody in there. And they want to change it from the dollar forty-eight to a flat rate of nine hundred and sixty-five dollars or something like that. But uh, it would require an amendment to that, and we need to go ahead and advertise that. So I would request that you all go ahead and authorize staff to uh, set a public hearing for that ordinance.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Have a second by Mr. Horni, is there any discussion or discussion on that? Here and now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Got two more items. Uh, one was, I had people asking me about the cameras at Jackson and Fort Chisum. And if the Sheriff's Department could give us an update on, on all of that. Uh, the speed cameras that was being set up. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. And, and next one is, uh, I've got some phone calls on speeding on ninety-four uh, around Sheffield School and the that area from Sheffield School to fifty-two. If, if, if we can get some rolling patrol or something there, I would, we appreciate it. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burnett, Ms. Lawson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I also probably got the same complaint about ninety-four. Um, the, I believe everyone received an email about the speeding and the gentleman that I spoke to just said it's, he said he saw, um, and I'm not sure if this was in the email, so I'm sorry if I'm repeating it. He said he saw a, a school bus almost get T-boned. He, one morning, he saw someone pass four vehicles, he says it's awful. And he says that he's made requests to the sheriff's office for patrol, understand they're shorthanded, but um, it's pretty bad from everything he told me. And I know that's been going on for years, but apparently it's gotten a lot worse. Um, and then not to sound like a broken record, Mr. Hankins, do we have any updates on the staffing for EMS and fire?
Uh, Mr. McCave, and I met with um, Michael Paris from the Virginia Fire Programs yesterday, um, I'm going to outline some of what I learned and uh, reference some of what he referenced in code. I've, I've got to become familiar with the code sections that he referenced, they, they were fairly new to me, so um, I expect to have something for you for next meeting.
Okay, good, thank you so much.
I thought you were going to ask about launches and landings. Uh, if you'd like to ask about launches and landings, um, we, we are uh, seeking uh, final approval from A E P for the site at New Lords Creek. Um, that one's been more of an issue, has got to work through the Appalachian Power, um, you know, corporate side. And I, I've been in contact with their folks, asking for expedited review on that.
Thank you so much, I know you've been working hard on it, so I was going to wait until the next meeting to ask again. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Yes, um, Kevin received um, an updated proposal from um, the contractor that, that we've agreed to work with uh, yesterday. Uh, he and I have started looking through that proposal, but have not been through it all yet. Um, that, that'll be something to bring to next meeting. Um, they proposed a, a multi-phase approach, so basically using the money that we have available now, here's what we can do, and then here's what we can save for later. So uh, I'll look through that in more detail and bring that to you at your uh, February twenty-eighth meeting.
The whole play phase and demolition, all play at once, or start back a little, or the demolition a little more time?
Um, you, you'd pretty much have to do the whole uh, demolition uh, upfront. Um, and what they propose is, is really the heart of the playground, so it's the majority of the equipment. Um, what they propose doing in later phases is, is some of the, the outlying equipment wouldn't um, it could be purchased a piece at a time, if, if you wanted to do it that way. Or be purchased individually by Dunford, if they want to uh, to make that part of their giving, so um, they'll look at it in detail and, and get you hopefully think the, the best options are at the next meeting.
Bye. Thank you, Mr. Cook, Mr. Smith.
So, Mr. Hankins, on the, I know Ms. Lawson just asked you the question about the uh, fire and EMS on the eastern end of county. Is that outlined, is it going to address both the part-time at Max Meadows and the the support through lead mines?
It will, um, and um, if we, we've got, got, um, you know, one of the key players here, you know, we, we still need to sit down and go through some of the issues that, that um, we would experience with EMS, but you know, there are also other EMS considerations that I'll, I'll put in that before you as well. some of the issues that, that um, we would experience with EMS, but you know, there are also other EMS considerations that I'll, I'll put in that note for you as well.
Yeah, just, you know, Ms. Lawson, we don't need to lose sight of that. We need to get this forwarded, we get that solved, fixed.
Well, we've spent a lot of time thinking about what the structure can be, um, we had a few new wrinkles thrown at us yesterday, um. But I think we can still do it i- in a responsible sort of way. You know, trying to keep in mind that we, we've got some budgetary constraints on what we can do, um. But we also have to look at what the marketplace is doing in terms of uh, EMS providers and what they're, what they're gonna cost is, as far as personnel costs to them.
Uh, next question, I'll just leave it to you, Mr. Hankins, on the broadband, you have an update on the broadband, I'm getting a lot of questions about it.
Yes, sir, uh, I, I spoke with Randy Hamm from Point Broadband, um, well, emailed with him uh, um, earlier in the week. Um, the, the first one that has to be finished is the Speedo District, and um, because of some right-of-way issues and some easement issues, um, they don't think that they're gonna end by the end of the first quarter, as they had projected when they came and spoke to you all in August. Uh, they are asking for an extension from uh, D H C D on that project. Um, but they are also, at the same time, making plans for how they roll out into the, the wider county uh, as part of the, the second phase of, of this grant, so um, they anticipate to start on time for the um, the, the, the second VETI grant, the, the first one in Speedo. Uh, they're, they're gonna need a little extra time, they are probably going to be helped by General Assembly action, one of the things that has held them up is getting uh, approval across railroads, and uh, the General Assembly on both sides of uh, of the General Assembly have approved bills that would expedite railroad reviews for uh, getting broadband rolled out into communities, and if that passes, then it would be logic, not July first, I don't think either one passed with an emergency uh, clause, but um, but that will certainly help uh, these, these companies, I think it gets it down to a thirty-day review with the railroads, so they can get the railroad crossings done.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Barry, I know it's been a while since then we talked about Smith Road, I have had some folks reach out to me, you know, and uh, and see where we at, and we had, we were looking at different options on that road, um, just kinda see where we went.
And um, I've set up a meeting. Right, talk about revenue sharing, really. Um, we know, we've gotten some numbers on Bertha Farms Road, um, that we're looking at. South Crest was another, that was in the, Smith Road was another that had, I think it's maybe some issue on if, but are there any other roads for revenue sharing?
Yeah, is it Wyler Road off of Red Hollow Road or something? I'll have to go back and look at my notes, I know there's a road right off of our, uh, Red Hollow. That wasn't ruled, was it, approved? But that's already a state name, I probably should have. We can take it.
Yeah, we, we'll take a look at it, I think you confused the revenue sharing.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll take that one from them. Um, the Guard Rail Gator Lane, I know when we met with B-Dog back in November, they were supposed to have already taken through that against the road and read up on that. And then the last thing I got, Mr. Chairman, I know it's early, as we're still in February, you haven't got the spring yet, but the later pickup, we need to go ahead and start working on that. And because if you drive through the county, uh, the county's starting to look like a wastebasket versus uh, the county that we own up, so. Just keep that out front of them, that's all I have.
Mr. Smith? They do have a the, the regional jail has one part-time crew that services every um, jurisdiction in the regional jail. Um, how many, you sheriff, you remember how many bags they picked up on forty-one the other day? Oh, I, I know every road needs it, but if you do have a road that's really bad, if you uh, send it to Chief Deputy Klein, they usually call him. And like I said, it's, they've got one crew, it's really sporadic, but I know if you go twenty-one from the town limits, there's probably fifty, sixty bags, there was a bunch of orange bags the other day.
I'll get a list, you know, from this one. That's all I have.
Mr. Horni?
Uh, I have two kind of questions, clarifications, when, when do we do the six-year plan?
Usually it's about May. B-Dog will be here at our next meeting, we'll talk about the Lee Road. Bridge, uh, and we can go ahead at that point in time and just talk to him about preparing for the six-year road plan. Want to have a special meeting, or do we want to take a day and go look at it, whatever it's going to be. Usually it's about May that we have the public.
I knew it was in spring sometime, but I couldn't remember exactly, uh. So them coming about the bridge, they're just coming basically to talk to the board and tell us what their ideal or what their plan on doing? And then they're gonna have, are they gonna have public meetings later?
Uh, that's part of the conversation I think they want to have, is talk with you all and talk about what type of public input. Uh, is, is needed, how you want to do public.
I, I was just wondering if I needed to tell people to be here at the next meeting, to have their input, or if it's better for them to wait?
This would just be disappointing, they, they could, they could, they're well, well becoming listeners, so then, uh, it could be B-Dog arranging the time, use our location here to me, or Speedo Elementary School, whatever. Uh, is that a public input, if it's something that, that they deem necessary and you all.
That's kind of what I thought, and I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting it correctly. Uh, I believe that's all I had, everything else has already been brought up and covered.
Um, yeah, the, I had the broadband, because I've got the same questions that, I guess, everybody else has had. Um, Mr. Hankins, is there an update on the radio system?
Um, we uh, have a purchase order, uh, requisition pending for the subscriber units, uh, we get those ordered this week. Um, and um, then it's just a matter of how long it takes to get those delivered.
Uh, do we have a good license for the L C C, or a frequency?
Um, he has not told me about the last frequency, he had five of the six that were needed, he was waiting on that sixth one, so I'll check in tomorrow and, and future an email, let you know.
Okay.
About what, what he says, um.
Cause I know this is a little shocking, but it didn't get my bad.
I, I've, I've noticed a few issues later.
I'll notice the Jackson, just would agree with the maybe it's just my inability. And um, I know everybody should have received the email um, for the GO Tech program. Um, that the school system was doing, um, the invitation was for March the ninth at five P M. You know, they're doing this pilot program and if you get a chance to go, I really encourage you to go, because it's absolutely amazing what these middle school students are doing with this technology. I mean, they're building stuff with three D printers and all this stuff, um. So I thought I'd give them a plug, and um, one last thing, Mr. Barry, or, or Mr. Hankins. Um, the whole bruhaha with the, um, sales tax and the local school board funding, have y'all seen any updates on that?
I have not.
There's a lot of lip service.
Parts of home that I can double check with as well as talking to Dr. Horni. But I have not heard of what the resolution is.
Part of it is still tied up in the General Assembly because the, the money committees obviously didn't agree, so um, it was been a lot of back and forth in committee meetings about um, how they, they make that, that good. Um, whether it's in next year or, you know, how, how they shaped that, so I don't think it's close to a resolution yet.
And I won't get on my soapbox about how it's gonna disproportionately affect Southwest. I'm sure I'm preaching the choir. Alright, that's all I have, the next item on our agenda is a closed meeting. Um, I'll entertain a motion under two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight. Go into closed session constitution of legal council, um, solar projects and two point two thirty-seven eleven A one. Personnel to discuss county administration. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And just from the record, I looked at Ms. Lawson was absent during the vote. With that being said, we'll be in closed session. Everybody have a good Valentine's Day. I got you out here as quick as I could.